Remain standing for pledge allegiance.
Let's pray together. Our God and our Father in heaven, we're thankful for today and for the privilege to live in a great country as such as the United States and even to live in this great area of it here in the middle of the country. We pray your blessings on each of the council members that they will represent their constituents well. We thank you, Father, for our lives, for our families. We pray your blessings upon each of them. At this time, Father, we're concerned about many that are affected by the high waters. We pray that they will be safe and that all that are working with them to help them to be safe will have a safe day and a safe evening. We pray, Father, that we will learn to trust in you as we tell people that we do. We know that you will bring everything around and it will be okay for us. We pray that you'll be with each one tonight of the council as they make the decisions that they must make, that they will make them with the best wisdom that they have, that they will listen to the ones that make comments and weigh all of the comments in the best way that they can. We're thankful for our leaders, our national leaders and our state leaders. We pray that you'll bless each one of them. Help them, Father, also to lead our country in a way that we can always be free. We pray for our military, that you will keep them safe. We pray that the countries that are at war will seek and find peace. We pray, Father, that we can avoid the wars that are there every day seem like that we could engage in. Guide us as we go through the night and keep us safe. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Roll call, Mrs. Phelps.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Crocker?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Davis?
Here.
Councilman Black?
Here.
Mayor Proton McVeigh?
Here.
Mayor DeGerris?
Here.
We have seven persons.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest: any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at the previous meeting.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will have a conflict of interest on the planning and zoning discussion and vote.
Okay, that'll be workshop item A?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. None others? Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none, move on to workshop item for discussion. Item A.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Give me just a minute, Dan. Item A: The city council will discuss a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny a request to rezone property from C-2 general commercial to RA-2 general residential apartment for future multifamily development. The property lies south of Eugene Boulevard and the applicant is Ozark Holding Company and Second LLC care of Andrew Danner, North Star Housing LLC and Missouri National Guard Foundation at 5775 Northwest 64th Terrace, Center, Suite 203, Kansas City, Missouri. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, the applicant is Ozark Holding Company as owners, represented by North Star Housing LLC and National Guard Foundation. The request is to rezone this to RA-2 residential apartments for future multifamily development. Existing land use is existing land is zone C-2 general commercial. However, it is vacant land. It's not utilized at this time. It does consist of 3.39 acres lying south of platted Eugene Boulevard. Surrounding land used to the northeast, south and west is C-2 general commercial. This has actually come before the planning and zoning twice. The first application was withdrawn. They came back with another development plan that reduced the footprint and lessened the amount of land they were asking to have rezoned. As planner, I did recommend approval and when it went through planning and zoning the second time it went to a vote, and they did recommend denial of the rezoning request. Access is from Eugene Boulevard. The comprehensive plan calls for a mixed use of C-2, RA and RS, which means RA is residential apartments, RS is residential single family, and that's what's called for in this area according to the comprehensive plan. Designation of this property as RA-2 residential apartment would not be out of character for this area. There are several apartment buildings to the southeast of this property that are zoned RA-1 at this time. And when it went through Planning and Zoning Commission, I did recommend that if it was rezoned, a developer must submit, must implement a stormwater management plan prior to development. And based upon comments from the fire chief, a fire apparatus access road would be required as requested by the Poplar Bluff Fire Department. And the plan that was brought in at the last meeting reflected that so that there is proper access for fire and other emergency vehicles. Any questions from me? There are representatives from the applicant in the audience tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Please give your name and address.
My name is Scott England. My address is 1320 Roseview Drive, Jefferson City, Missouri, 65101. Hello, my name is Scott England and I'm president of the Missouri National Guard Foundation. I'm a veteran of both Afghanistan and Iraq. I want to start out this evening by thanking all the veterans in the audience tonight who have come out to support this mission. I also want to thank the city staff for their continued support and the city council for putting forth efforts into understanding our development. And finally, I want to thank, not finally, but I want to thank everyone. The prayer was excellent. We had a big flood coming. We've got a lot of people in harm's way. There's a lot of law enforcement, National Guards out by about 500, lots of sand being moved in, so I just ask everyone to pray for everybody that potentially is involved in this whole flooding issue. There's a few items that I would like to discuss tonight about our development and what we are trying to accomplish. This is a new concept for the foundation that serves a need we have identified over the years. We've provided, as we've provided supportive services and other opportunities for veterans and their families. We hope to complete this development and construct several more across the state. This is really our first development and that we've been trying to get to for about three or four years in an opportunity we can serve veterans in a way that we've never been able to serve them before, in a way that the state and federal government doesn't have programs to do that. We are a not-for-profit. All of our board members are volunteers. Nobody receives any compensation. We do not have a paid staff on hand. We are, so anything that we do down the road, once we take ownership of this, any profits or any things, gains we realize are funds that will be used for veterans in need. Nobody ever plans on taking a salary or compensation for this. The last meeting, there was some discussion about what if we sell this? We have to maintain ownership of this for 30 years. And at that point, we could sell it. That's a minimum. That's not our plan to do so. We're trying to get a revenue source, to find monies to help veterans and ways to go about that, and that's our goal. We want to be able to help veterans and find ways, find monies to be able to do that. And this is an African opportunity. And that's why we want to try it here in Poplar Bluff and see how things go there. And another issue that came up was the real property taxes. We have to pay those for the 30 years. And we fully intend on paying them then as long as we have ownership of that property. And then we talked a little bit concerned about our lead referral agency. Jan was not able, wanted to be here tonight, but she's not able to. She couldn't get through the floodwaters to get here, so she apologizes, but she wishes she could be here. We have a good working relationship with Jan. We believe she can do the job, but if something down the road comes where Jan can no longer do the job and we need to do another lead referral agency, we plan on being able to do that if we have to do it ourselves as within the foundation. But we will make sure that we have a good lead referral agency in place. We also believe that if you look objectively at the comprehensive plan of Poplar Bluff, this development fits the profile of what long-term plans are. In closing, this development means a lot to people. It could help along with us and all of us at the foundation. It's very important for us to succeed here. We want to make a good impression in Poplar Bluff. If we can't, if this impression is very important for us, if we do, this is successful and we try to do this in other states, in other cities throughout the state, they're going to be calling Poplar Bluff and say, "Tell us about it, this Missouri National Guard Foundation. Did they do what they said they were going to do?" We want that to be yes. "Did we take care of veterans in your area?" We want that to be yes. We are going to house that thing with veterans and we are able to, and that's one last concern that I found out about later today, is that worried about us being discriminatory with non-veterans and that? We were approved by MHD-C with this veterans preference concept in mind, and we were told and we saw the criteria that was there, that we can give preference, we just can't discriminate. And so we're able to give veterans preference, and that's how we're going to house this thing with veterans, or they would not have approved us on this. So we will house this thing with vets. We will use a referral agency. We will make sure, we'll make sure it's local vets, area vets, county vets, state vets, but we're going to house this thing with vets, and we make that promise to you, the city of Poplar Bluff. Thank you again for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you have of me at this time.
Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Christman, 464 North Main Street, and I want to make sure I got my facts straight first of all. What we're discussing here is changing Eugene to zoning on a little piece of property out on Eugene Boulevard from commercial to apartment. The funding for the construction for the apartments has been approved, approximately $10.4 million to create 48 apartments. Doing this arithmetic on this is $210,000 per apartment. This is in the form of state tax credits, and they'll be converted into cash in order to pay for the apartments. The owner of the project is, I'm not sure I understand here, Ozark Holding or the foundation, National Guard Foundation?
The owner of the property is the Missouri National Guard Foundation.
It will be the owner of the property. And the goal is to use it for 100% veterans. Great. The Missouri National Guard Foundation has partnered with North Star Housing for the development process. Is that correct, Scott? North Star is represented by one of their principals, Mr. Andrew Danner, tonight. Does that pretty much cover the basics as we all understand it?
I believe so.
By show of hands, I'd like to see just how many think that this is primarily a veterans' property. Nobody on the council?
We will vote on that, Mr. Christman.
I'm sorry?
We will vote on that, Mr. Christman.
That's not appropriate. Okay, very good. The, and I would expect, or we would expect the rent to be $500, $700 to 700 apartments? What number are you using?
That's not appropriate for someone.
I'm sorry?
But just the average for the 48 years.
Mr. Christman?
Yeah.
A point of order has been raised. This is not appropriate. You are entitled to speak to this council, to state your positions on it. You're not entitled to poll the audience. You're not entitled to poll this council. This is not a debate time for you. You may address the council. You may say anything you want in opposition to or in support of, but your line of questioning and your conduct here is not appropriate for these purposes tonight.
I thought we were trying to get to the bottom of the issue here. I apologize. Now, if the property does remain commercial, it's likely that at some time in the future there will be some retail there, and it will generate property tax revenue. If it goes apartments, there's no hope for that. Sales tax revenue is eliminated forever. Poplar Bluff is experiencing a burst of commercial growth, and I think the possibility of using this in the not-too-distant future is certainly a lot higher than it was a few years ago. Would also point out that only one single-family housing unit was built last year. That and along with the number of ads, for rent ads, indicates to me that there's no housing shortage in Poplar Bluff. And I do assume that the city council of Poplar Bluff is working for the citizens of Poplar Bluff. Now, let's examine a few details. The Missouri National Guard Foundation, since I can't ask them, I'll tell you what I know, is paying North Star a development fee on this. Now, Scott mentioned that nobody on the foundation board is getting a salary or collecting anything, but that doesn't, isn't true of the developers. They're getting a fee. How much do you think that can be?
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter? It doesn't matter that somebody's making $1.2 million to develop this?
Where's your facts at, Mr. Christman?
I'm sorry?
Do you have facts for that, Mr. Christman?
Yes, I do.
You did not give it to us, so that's just mere speculation on your part.
It's not speculation. Mr. Gus Metz from the state office gave me that number today.
I have not seen it, and it has not been approved by his council.
You're not interested in the facts? You can change.
No, I am interested in the facts, Mr. Christman. I'm not going to argue with you. You may proceed.
And then next is the cash flow from the rent. He also, Gus Metz also mentioned that there's very little cash flow from the rent. Because it's a fully subsidized project on the front end, they're able to charge low rents. They're very competitive, and as a matter of fact, they're anti-competitive to existing property owners. I'm afraid that the people that are in support of this have been drinking the Kool-Aid. This is not a veterans' housing project. It's in favor of making $1.2 million for developers. You know, I'd like to ask, is $210,000 per unit, is that an appropriate number for development? For $210,000, I could buy two houses and give it to two veterans' families. That's just way too much. Ed, you mentioned that Gamblin' Lumber would be selling most of the materials there and would receive sales tax. This was a conversation out front some two or three months ago. And, you know, I'd like to point out that since the purchaser or the buyer of the property is a 501(c)(3), they are exempt from sales tax or could be exempt from sales tax. So if the materials is $200, $2 million, then that's $100,000 that the city and school board is missing out on just from the fact that they're a 501(c)(3). I sent an email around this morning. Did any of you look at North Star Housing and the projects that they've completed? They partner with several people, and I went to the sites of the people that they partner with, and none of them mentioned North Star in their reciprocal agreements. We were, several, a couple of you were here, two or three of you were here at the time that Eight Points was approved. I think this is another Stan Kronke that's come to Poplar Bluff to try to take some money out. And again, back to the fact that the north corridor is experiencing a burst of growth. Will there be increases for police and fire because of this project? And I think yes. Now, again, Steve mentioned that they're paying their share of the taxes. He didn't mention what their share of the taxes might be. And again, Marion Tibbs has made the point that this type of project does not pay the full share of taxes that a private developer would. You know, I really question whether or not $210,000 for each housing unit should be there. And I understand, again, Scott mentioned Cape Barrow Head, and I understand their support of their project. Cape Barrow Head is dedicated to veterans, but I wonder if they're not trying to use this to fund their pet projects. And I'd say to North Star, you're not helping veterans. You're using veterans to help yourself. We want to see that the word veterans is something that just a password for everything is okay. It's not. $210,000 is too much to pay for anything. Do we want to build it, $210,000 for every veteran in the state of Missouri or every poor person in the state of Missouri? It's just outrageous that we would be looking at that. I'm assuming that you haven't looked at, from the reaction that I got, I'm assuming you haven't looked at the email that I sent you this morning. I'm sorry you're against collecting all of the facts. But when I spoke with Gus Metz, he had another two or three tidbits. Number one, the developer must make certain financial guarantees. And I really would like for you, as the council, as our representatives, to see that. They have to own the property, and I think, I would dispute what Scott said, I think they have to own it for 15 years, not 30, if I understood my conversation correctly. Since it is a fine and subsidized project, there probably will be no loan on it. There should be no loan on it. It should be fully paid, but that doesn't keep them from it.
Mr. Christman, a point of order. Sir, this discussion tonight that we're having is about the rezoning issue and whether or not this is an appropriate request in compliance with our master plan to rezone this property. The issue on the merits of whether or not this project should be recommended and approved by the city council was taken up in the summer of 2016. So you need to limit your discussion to the issue of the appropriateness of a rezone from a C-2 to an RA.
Okay. Again, there would be the question of whether or not we can support the services of an apartment complex on the limited revenue that will be generated from it. Now, I understand that you can attach conditions to the approval here, and I would like to ask that you do that or at least consider doing that. Since it is taxpayer dollars, I'd like to, and it has been billed as a veterans' project, I'd like to suggest that maybe there be a penalty put on that a certain percentage of the rents to non-veterans comes directly to the city. Would that be an appropriate thing?
It's not appropriate on the discussion we're having here tonight, Mr. Christman, which is the issue of rezoning.
Yeah, well, I'm saying this is a condition of rezoning.
No, sir, it's not an appropriate condition for rezoning.
Well, I guess you've shut me off completely. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Fowler. I live at 1832 Ralston Avenue. I was here last month, and I spoke to you. Hopefully, I'm a little bit more prepared this time than last time, and hopefully I won't be as entertaining as the last speaker. I just want to take a little bit to make you understand what the issue of this rezoning means. These are my four oldest children. This is my son, John, at age 15. Two years later, right here in the city of Poplar Bluff that he grew up in, he signed a letter of intent with the U.S. Army. He joined the U.S. Army. My son turned 21 in Afghanistan. My son is now Staff Sergeant in Fort Dix, New Jersey, still serving in the military to this day. This is my son, Rowan. This is Rowan at 14. Five years later, my son, Rowan, signed a letter of intent with the U.S. Army and joined. Unfortunately, he was found to have a medical condition and was honorably discharged. He is now in Florida in school for computer programming and plans to move back to the city of Poplar Bluff again, where he grew up. Now, I'm going to introduce you to my husband, Timothy Jarvis, U.S. Navy Machinist Mate Nuclear Second Class. He joined the Navy in March of 2000. He finished his sea school September 10, 2001. Didn't even get 24 hours leave before he was called up for 9/11. He was OIF, OEF, honorably discharged in October of 2004. This is what your issue is. This, not money, this. And no veteran is not a term for do what you want. Veteran is a term for someone that put on a military uniform and let this joke of a government we have tell them what to do. I'm sorry? I heard someone say point of order. I'll go on. My husband, and although he will probably be upset with me for telling you this, was diagnosed with PTSD several years ago. This place is what? They're designing it for people like him, an entire complex of veterans. Because if you've got a veteran by your side, you've always got somebody that's got your six. Three of the most important men in my life are in this town or planning to come back to this town. So you're telling them, you know, it's great you grew up here and you plan to come back here when you retire and buy a house and do whatever. I'm assuming my son is going to be a four-star general before he retires. He's only 25, and he's a Staff Sergeant. So this is what you guys need to look at. My boys, I now have a two-year-old, and I'm honestly assuming he's going to be a military kid too, considering his father is. This is what you guys need to look at, not your charts with your money and your taxes and all that. Because I will tell you right now, and this may be out of order. We moved here June 10.
Ms. Jarvis, in all due respect, I addressed Mr. Christman about the issues that are before the council tonight, and although we are grateful for the military service of your family, the issue here tonight to be discussed is whether or not this is an appropriate rezone.
And I am trying to tell you, sir, why this is an important rezone.
Okay, and thank you. Please, please keep your comments and your discussion to the issue of the rezone.
Well, and the reason why I started to tell you we moved from Texas to Poplar Bluff was because we thought it would be better here for veterans than it was there. We thought we were actually going to get treated differently. We thought the city of Poplar Bluff actually cared, but the actions that I've seen so far, they don't. And I'm sorry, I don't believe that. That's what you guys need to look at. Think about that. You might lose some money on it. Yeah, you probably will. But I guarantee it, I'd rather sleep in a complex full of veterans than anybody else in this room.
Thank you.
Todd Settling, 1415 Highland, Poplar Bluff, Missouri. I served on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I was not able to take part in the discussion or any of the voting because I am working with the National Guard Foundation doing the civil engineering work on this project. Limiting this directly to zoning, as zoning is set up, the way the comprehensive plan is, the RA's set a buffer between single-family and commercial property, which is why it's an ideal location for this type of rezoning. I don't feel because there are other RA-zoned properties immediately adjacent to the south of there that this would cause any different kind of effect on any of the other neighborhoods, whether they're commercial or residential. None of the exits for this property would proceed east to affect any traffic in that But if I had been able to vote on this, I would have voted in favor of the rezoning of this piece of property.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Barbara Rexrode, and I live at 2220 Lee Street in Poplar Bluff. First of all... These apartments would be placed in a rezoned commercial area. The view would be the back of commercial properties that have already been built. I believe the crowding of forty-eight units and about a hundred-and-fifty people into this small area is a very unpleasant atmosphere for our veterans. Eugene Boulevard leads to the busiest highway in our area, and adding this amount of people for the area will cause a great deal of congestion and crowding for everyone and our veterans. If you want to do your veterans' right and to make sense with your, where you put apartments, it would make more sense not to put apartments here. This congested area does not provide a pleasant atmosphere for anyone who would live in that area. Saying that there are already apartments nearby is not a good reason to add more. Basically, there are no children in the apartments that sit there right now. They are senior citizens, and they have an access road that is safe and quiet and comes directly into the Poplar Bluff Square. I also believe that it's not a sound business decision to rezone this property. The fact that the property tax will most likely be less than twenty percent of a commercial development, this will affect our city finances. Also, our schools rely on a percentage of collected property tax to help pay for their bills. Both city and schools struggle each day financially to meet the present needs. There's one other reason that I ended up staying in this discussion, and it was to find the truth, but it, because it is discussed that twenty-five percent disabled go in and seventy-five percent are not, for not disabled, and that, that they, it was said that it would be a hundred percent veterans. I, too, discussed this with Gus Metz today, and he said that the seventy-five percent would be open for all people, that they could not discriminate, that it is open to all people. The twenty-five percent is, would be considered set aside for disabled veterans. They would want to try to do that for sure. And that the M-H, the Missouri Development Housing Commission will oversee this project for fifteen years, he said. So there have been other places that have been requested that they have zoning changes or sell property. One in particular was Melville, Missouri, that North Star went into, and they declined it because when it first came to them, they were told that it was going to be a hundred percent veterans, and they later found out that it was much less than that. And they were concerned about how the property could change, that it would change and there wouldn't be veterans in it. And that's, that is a concern of mine, too. And I assume that's not necessarily appropriate tonight, but if it's going to be housing for veterans, then it should be. But it's not set up that way. It isn't. I've investigated it. I had hoped that, over the time that you all would have investigated that and told us that you found that out, but you didn't, so I've done a lot of digging and talked to a lot of people, and that is what I found out. And my husband's a veteran. I have all kinds of veterans in my family, and it means a lot to me for them to be treated properly and to have a place to live that is safe and comfortable for them. If my father lived in this area, he would be here speaking to you tonight, saying, "Please do the right thing," and put them in an area that is safer, that conducive to families where they can play, where they can ride their bikes, and that the, it's not just mixed in a very, very commercial area, right next to a very, very busy highway. That's about all I have to say. I just, I really wish that the truth about the seventy-five percent could have been brought up a long time ago. We've asked that question a lot of times, and I had to find it out for myself. So that's all I can tell you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Travis Critchfield. I live at seven-forty-three East Outer Road, apartment eight. I currently live in the county. I did discuss last time that I was a veteran, or I am a veteran, and I had trouble finding decent housing. When my family received a housing voucher, we first looked to live in the city of Poplar Bluff to use that voucher, but we were unable to find either decent housing for our family or a landlord that would actually take the voucher. And so we've actually ended up living out in the county, which is not a problem for us because we do own a vehicle, and so I'm able to commute and drive into the city. But I do know a lot of veterans, once they get out of the service, because of different reasons, don't have a vehicle. And so I do, I do feel this is the right project, being in the city. That way, if they do find work or they need services at the VA, it's not that, it's not that far of a distance for them to walk or get a ride or get the DAV to bring them in. So I do support the zoning for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Cooper. I live at fourteen-oh-two North Fifth Street. I am for the rezoning for veterans, housing for veterans. I am, I was, I'm retired from the military. But I think everybody's running prices around. What's the value of life? The soldiers is called upon to go forth and defend the country with their life, not dollars and cents, but their life. Some fail, some are injured, or some are hurt. They come back. They need to have a place to stay. As far as peace and quiet, being routed, they know what it's all about. They've been there, they did it, and as far as I can see and understand, peace and quiet would be nice for them to have. And a place that's nice for them to stay, regardless of the space, they talk about so many places in a small area. They live in foxholes with two or three or four or six even. So they know what close places are. And I'm, I understand what your, your position are, and at the same time, I feel that we shouldn't cut the veterans short because of what they try and attempt to do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ray Richardson. I live at six-thirty Fine Street. At one point, I was a homeless veteran here in Poplar Bluff, and I had nowhere to go. I went to the VA for help, and they just tried to shuffle you off to Peaceful Pines or whatever it's called. Without having those services or without having a place for veterans to go, it creates this dark place. If I had a place that veterans could go to support and, you know, live and grow, it would have kept me from drinking, it would have kept me from trying to go down the dark path. So I completely support this zoning because veterans need to be together sometimes. And if we don't have that, or if we don't have that spot to live, to grow, it's like a barracks for us. We have that spot, we can grow together, and it keeps us from making bad decisions. And bad decisions obviously lead to horrible consequences for the city, for the county, and for the state. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
As we all hear, I'm a hundred percent for the veterans, a hundred percent for veteran housing. I just don't think that's the place. The reason for, for many reasons. And we've all talked about zoning, zoning, zoning. We haven't talked about planning, planning, planning. That's, that place may not be the most appropriate place to put this type of facility. I think there's better places. I think when you take commercial property out of Poplar Bluff, Poplar Bluff's only got so many square feet in it, and you're taking it from commercial to residential. And that, again, today it's vacant, what's tomorrow? Where Walmart is today, I could have bought an acre of that parking lot for less than eight thousand dollars. Well, and it was commercial then. Today, what's it worth? Again, the same thing. It's the plan, and I think the planning and zoning is met, talked about it. I think you all need to consider the future as opposed to just this one project. I've got veterans on HUD vouchers in my rentals. I do, you know, I know that there's rental places available, good rental places, that will meet their needs, and I don't think that's the, just an appropriate place. I think we need to keep that for commercial. I agree, we need veterans' housing, but we don't need it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
I have one more thing to say. Barbara Rexrode, twenty-two-twenty Lee Street. And the one more thing I wanted to say is that our commercial property is in a really good spot, and God isn't going to make any more land within Poplar Bluff. And that it would be far more, it would make far more sense to help the veterans in the city, our children, and our schools by keeping this property commercial and seeing if we can't find a place that isn't commercial for this place to be, that would be, like I said, more pleasant for them. And I wanted to reiterate that seventy-five percent of this housing will be up for veterans or other people. They cannot discriminate. This is fair housing law, and this is what I was told today from Missouri Housing Commission. So we need to remember that, that it's not going to all be veterans, and I'm sorry, it's not, that's just the way it has to be built, and I wish we would have known this a long time ago.
Thank you.
My name is Kelly Williams. I live at seven-hundred Hendrick Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri. I made Poplar Bluff my home after my first deployment in Iraq. I became official residence in two thousand and six, and since I've been in this community, I haven't seen anybody else take interest in this property that we're trying to get from commercial to residential. And I think it's a great location. It's a location where veterans, if they don't have vehicles, it's easily available if they have to walk. There's a bus route if they need to get picked up. The Poplar Bluff bus system can pick them up, get them to the VA. And like they said, this hasn't been done anywhere else. This is an opportunity for Poplar Bluff to shine, to do something great, for a project that can help a lot of veterans. There's a lot of veterans. And every day, I see homeless veterans, and I want to see them to have an opportunity to have a good place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else getting up and entertaining a motion, second to move this to the voting session to be held tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the city council...
Any questions?
Yeah. Item B, the city council review application received for city board appointments. Item B, the city council review application received for city board appointments. Can I ask you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you all should have received in your packet list of the citizens that have applied for the board appointments. This just needs to be passed on to the next voting session at the end of the month, at which time you all will make the appointments.
We're going to get some, there's a couple didn't have any applicants on it. Are we going to re-advertise for some of those?
I'm not sure. That's what I was thinking. Laurie's already re-advertised, so.
Okay, and we make those appointments if they come in after...
Yeah, they can come in with the next go-round.
Move this, make a motion to move this to the voting session, is it May fifteenth?
Yes, sir.
On May fifteenth?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council will discuss a resolution declaring a state of emergency in the city of Poplar Bluff and to seek disaster reimbursement for flooding from the State Emergency Management Agency and/or the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we don't know that this is actually necessary, but more of a precaution. If we do pass this, it might give us a better chance of receiving funding from FEMA and SEMA. As you all know, we've got a disaster going on right now, and we've spent a lot of money on overtime and equipment and renting of equipment, and hopefully, we can get reimbursed for some of that.
Any questions? Entertaining a motion, second to move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to action required items. Mr. Black. She just barely got set back down.
Mr. Mayor, before you read it, I want to make sure that we're clear on the way that we're presenting it, that we make the motion to approve the zoning. Is that the way it is written?
Yes, that's the way the bill is written.
Right, so we vote yes, it is a vote to approve the zoning, and no is a vote to vote against it. Thank you.
Bill number seven-nine-nine-four, the city council will take action on an ordinance rezoning property located south of Eugene Boulevard from C-2 General Commercial to RA-2 General Residential Apartment for future multifamily development.
Move for first reading in bill number seven-nine-nine-four, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance rezoning property located along and south of Eugene Boulevard from C-2 General Commercial to RA-2 General Residential Apartment.
Move for second reading in bill number seven-nine-nine-four by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance rezoning property located along and south of Eugene Boulevard from C-2 General Commercial to RA-2 General Residential Apartment.
Move for adoption of bill number seven-nine-nine-four.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Phelps?
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Black? Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill number seven-nine-nine-four is adopted. Bill number seven-nine-nine-five, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter to a contract with Smith &amp; Company Engineers relative to the Poplar Bluff Trails Project, TAP. Project, TAP 510011, for the pedestrian bridge.
Move for first reading in Bill number 7995 in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract for professional services between the city of Popper Bluff and S.H. Smith &amp; Company for engineering services relative to the Popper Bluff Trails Project, TAP 5100011, pedestrian bridge.
Move for second reading in Bill number 7995 by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract for professional services between the city of Popper Bluff and S.H. Smith &amp; Company for engineering services relative to the Popper Bluff Trails Project, TAP 5100011, pedestrian bridge.
Move to adopt, Bill number 7995.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Phelps.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7995 is passed. Bill number 7996, the City Council will take action on ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter to an agreement with West Star Energy, Inc.
Move for first reading of Bill number 7996 by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading of Bill 7996, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract for management services between the city of Popper Bluff and West Star Energy, Inc.
Move for second reading of Bill number 7996 by caption only.
Second. Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract for management services between the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, and West Star Energy, Inc.
Move for adoption of Bill number 7996.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Phelps.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7996 is passed. Bill number 7997, the City Council will take action on ordinance authorizing and directing the submission of a ballot proposition to the qualified voters of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to consider imposing a local use tax at the same rate as the local sales tax of the city of Popper Bluff for purchases, purchases from out-of-state vendors that exceed $2,000 at the general municipal election to be held in the city on August 8, 2017.
Move for first reading of Bill number 7997 by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of 2 1/4% pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Section 144.600 through 144.761 RSMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as city sales tax is repealed, reduced, or raised, and provided, providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, for their approval at the primary election called and to be held in the city on August 8, 2017.
Move for second reading of Bill number 7997 by caption only.
I'll second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of 2 1/4% to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Section 144.600 through 144.761 RSMO, providing, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as any sales tax is repealed, reduced, or raised, and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city of Popper Bluff for their approval at the primary election called and to be held in the city on August 8, 2017.
Move for adoption of Bill number 7997.
Second. Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Phelps.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7997 is passed. Resolution number 1855, the City Council will take action on a resolution declaring a state of emergency in the city of Popper Bluff and authorizing the city of Popper Bluff to seek funding for disaster reimbursement from the State Emergency Management Agency and/or the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
Move for the reading of Resolution number 1855. In caption only.
Motion second for the reading of Resolution number 1855, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
A resolution of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, declaring a state of Missouri, a state of emergency in the city of Popper Bluff resulting from the flood of April 2017, and authorizing the mayor and the city administration to seek assistance from all state, regional, and federal agencies for assistance.
Move for adoption of Resolution number 1855.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any comments, questions? Roll call, Mrs. Phelps.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh?
Yes.
Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution passes. No need for a closed meeting. Do the city managers report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to give you all an update on the flood situation. Black River at Popper Bluff reached right at 22 feet this afternoon. At 5:15 this evening, it dropped to 21.96. At 6:15, it dropped to 21.71 feet, which means it's going down, it's going down slowly. The thing we have to remember is Clearwater Dam was going to start releasing approximately 6,000 to 7,000 cubic feet per second, which in the past, they've released around 4,000 feet per second. It takes around 24 hours for us to start noticing that water in Popper Bluff and a full 48 hours for the full impact, which means we're probably going to drop a few more feet, and then tomorrow afternoon, the river will start rising again and probably go back up to 22 feet and probably stay there for a couple of days. So, we're going to have a flood situation in Popper Bluff all this week or most of this week. Just because the water might be receding doesn't mean people need to go back to their homes. We have the shelter at the Black River Coliseum. At 5 o'clock this evening, we had approximately 125 people registered there. We can hold up to several hundred at the Coliseum. People bringing in donations of food, pillows, blankets, toilet paper, paper towels, anything they can think of, and it's deeply appreciated. It amazes me how this community always goes together and helps when in need. A lot of different entities involved. We have the, of course, our police department, our street department, our fire department, some of our other city departments, the Butler County Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, Butler County Health Department, Missouri Highway Patrol, MoDOT, EMA Director Robbie Myers, Red Cross Volunteer Jeff Shaw, Butler County Road Department. We've had the Hannibal Fire Department here with the rescue boats. We've had the Malden Police Department here helping, and I'm sure we've had numerous agencies I don't know about. At 6:30 this evening, Congressman Jason Smith was at the police department and had been reviewing the flood. Senator Blunt's office has been contacted. Governor Greitens was in, I think, Van Buren, the Donafin area. Our hearts do go out to go to Ripley in Carter County. They've had it much worse than we have. Actually, homes floating down, or cabins floating down current river. All that said, I'd just like to thank everybody that's helped, and it's not over yet, but hopefully by the end of the week, things will be much better.
What can we, as not just council members, but citizens, do to help?
You can always help with volunteer with the Coliseum. Like I said, we've got 125 down there now. There may be 200, but last night at 11:30, I was down there, and we have six people, so...
So, do we just go to the Coliseum and see if they need us, or is there someplace to call?
No, you can go to the Coliseum. Any help's appreciated.
Further to entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
For adjourn.